The Smyrna Municipal Planning Commission for September 3, 2020 will start with a prayer from Mike Allen and the pledge from Regina Mette. Stand, please.
Much praise. Dear Lord, Father, we just thank you for this day. Father God, we just thank you for all that you bestow upon us. Father God, just watch over us as a commission here to do the work for the city. Father God, just continue to be with our first responders, our police and fire, all nurses and doctors as they deal with pandemic. Father God, I just thank you for the opportunity to serve our town. Father, again, just continue to watch over us and guide us in all we do, in Christ's name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys. Citizens' comments?
Notice this time?
Just a continual reminder for folks watching on TV, we're wearing our masks into the meeting room and during the meeting, and you may not be able to see it, but we have plexiglass between us with our folks that are here. We're social distance, and people are also wearing masks out in the audience. So with that, let's move on to the next agenda item, approval of the minutes of the August meeting. Are the minutes in order from our last meeting, counselor?
Yes.
Okay. With the meeting?
I'm going to approve the minutes.
I have a motion to approve the minutes, so I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is new business. Looks like we are starting with a rezoning request. Shawn Collins, Stewart's Glen, 8286 Rocky Fork Amble Road, rezoning R3 to PRD. Kevin, I believe you have this.
I do. This is a rezoning request. It's for one tract of land and a part of a second tract of land. It's currently zoned R3. The request is to a PRD. The surrounding zoning is a mix of R3 and the Cedar Hills PRD in town, and there's also some RM zoning in Rutherford County, where the areas have not been annexed into the town limits. Land use plan would support a medium-density, single-family residential development in this area. This proposed PRD is for a couple of different uses, single-family lots of 20 and 32 units that they're calling cottages, or roughly equivalent to a townhouse unit, that are 32 of those on the total development on the property. We had a few comments. A couple of these are kind of standard comments, like regarding the grading permit fee. This area has also served with a proposed upgrade or needed upgrade to the Morton Lift Station, and so this project really can't begin until that upgrade is completed. And then they did make a comment, or make a note in their development plan that the front porch extension is mixed in beyond the front of the house, which is fine, but they do still have to meet the setbacks, and we just made that note, and they've noted that as well on the plans now. We did have a few other comments. One, this is number six on your list there, to provide calculations on the percentage of usable open space on the development, and they have submitted that now, and that does meet our requirements, so that can be removed. Number seven, the single-family portion of the development will be served by a public street. The cottages will be private streets, but within that public street, they are, have an area shown kind of within the cul-de-sac of a landscaped area in the middle, and which is, we have a couple of those in town, and that's typically how we handle that, is there is an agreement between the town and the HOA to maintain that landscaped area. The town does do the maintenance for that, and so they have agreed to that as well. Number eight and nine are comments from Consolidated Utility District, as this does lie within their service area. There is not adequate fire flow at this time to serve this area. However, it is a part of an upgrade project that is underway and is expected to be completed next spring, so it will be, by the time there's a need for fire flow in that area, they will have it. So that is a comment that was made by Consolidated Utility District. And I believe that's all that I have.
Kevin, have we communicated as far as required setbacks for parking and driveways?
Yes. Yeah, the single-family portion of the development will have a 35-foot front setback and a double-width driveway there, and they are seven and a half feet side setbacks. And the cottage area will also, they'll have one-car garages, but they will also have a double-width driveway and will be set back, actually will be kind of a rear-entry garage, but they will have a double-width driveway and a 20-foot setback on the back, so they will be meeting that. And then in addition to that, there is some guest parking, a couple of different locations within the development as well.
Were there any other special conditions or requirements that were suggested for the townhomes?
The other one was the HVAC units in the rear on the single-family piece. I think everything else, I think that's covered everything else.
And I may have misunderstood. I thought there was something that had to do with this being age-restricted as far as the towns go. Has that been proposed?
No.
Okay.
No, this is not something that, we do have one like that that has been approved on Morton Lane. Yeah, this is a, but they are not looking at an age-restricted, on this one.
Any other questions for Kevin?
Chairman, show me not voting or participating in the conversation.
Mette, you have that right. Okay.
The developer, I think, has a representative that may want to speak.
Oh, yeah.
Kevin, this is the engineer for this project with Lane Solutions 2925 Bay Hill Drive. Sorry, if y'all, can y'all hear me okay in the mask?
We can.
Couple things, Kevin, I thought we had put that in the notes and resubmitted, but our intention is to age-restrict the multifamily.
Okay.
These are going to be two-car rear garages, two bedrooms on the lower floor. These are like 28 by 80-foot deep, they're very large units, all zero-entry, large turnarounds. They're definitely designed for us people getting older. I'm one of those now, so.
I'm with you.
Also, as far as the pump station, my development company, Blakeney Partners, has signed an agreement with the city that I believe, Brian told me as I came in, they just finished executing today, so we have entered into agreement with the city to upgrade the pump station, so we're happy to resolve that issue out there. And then, I think that's it. And we do appreciate this, and we, you know, we're involved in Blakeney, then we don't own the other projects, but we manage Westover and Stewart's Creek, and we're working on Derby Run with the group out there, so we're very involved out here and believe that as housing diversifies out here, that we'll be in line with what we feel like the market is headed to and what's needed out here. So we do thank you for your time, and I'm here for any questions.
This is a second age-restricted, or at least an element of age restriction in this area, is it not?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, the other one was on Morton Lane.
Okay. Were you, are you involved in that project?
Yes.
That's what I thought.
Those are villas, those are two units side by side, which are, the interest we're getting of that from homebuyers are, gosh, there's no way to correctly say this, but they're more interested in having a more of an indoor living in these cottages, or a little bit more active-driven people that are, travel a lot, I should say. And this is, there's a good example of this in Bent Creek in Nolanville. This product here is built by Goodall Homes, although Wes Patterson's intent to build this one right here. And, you know, put them in small groups of 30, 40, and they're excellent, intermingled with, especially a big school like Stewart's Creek. It's really such a draw having the park and school there.
You know, when I heard of the project, I polled some folks that might be just a tad older than me. And, you know, I talked to them about something like, you know, the villages that they used to always advertise in Florida, or what's the other?
Del Webb.
Thank you, Del Webb. And I got some interesting comments back, and it was, you know, they were looking for a mix of community, that it was good not only to be around people their age, but to see younger couples with children and, you know, kind of the couples that are in between. And there is a lot of discussion about not wanting the outdoor life. I tell you, I like the outdoor life until I start to cut my yard, and then I really quickly look forward to indoor life as soon as I'm through, so.
Yeah. I've got my kids up for adoption at the moment until this COVID's over, but I do look forward to missing them again.
Yeah. And I'll tell you that, I know Mark's not participating in the conversation, but he's been a champion for affordable housing and alternative housing for our senior, so, and I've said this on many different occasions, that, I don't know that it was a joke, but it was always kind of understood that when you grew up in Smyrna, when it was time to leave the parents' house, you moved to Nashville and Murfreesboro and got an apartment, and then when you retired in Smyrna, once you couldn't take care of your home, you went to Murfreesboro or Nashville to find something like what we're beginning to see here. So I do appreciate you bringing this element to the project.
Well, we're excited. Thank y'all very much.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve, and that's with staff comments, including?
With staff comments.
With the restricted covenants, as far as restricted age covenants for the townhomes, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll be glad to second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Excuse me, it can be a challenge with our limitations here of space trying to move from one item to the other with plans in front of us. Our next item for discussion is rezoning R1 to PCD Florence Road Self-Storage, location 7085 Florence Road. Shawn Sanders, Kevin?
Yeah, this is another rezoning request. It is about 3.4 acres of property. Surrounding zoning is a mix of R1, R3, and I2. The land use plan would support a medium-density, single-family residential development in this area. This is a planned industrial development. The reason for it being an industrial development is because it is for mini-storage and vehicle storage development, which is allowed only in industrial districts in Smyrna. The proposed total building square footage is 50,098. It's in multiple buildings. There's going to be some conventional mini-storage, as well as some just covered parking, where people could, you know, park their RVs or boats and those kind of things. So we did review this. This is directly across the street from an existing industrial business, as well as existing storage units as well. And so we kind of owned and managed out of that, the building across the street, kind of an expansion of that business. We did have a couple of comments, one kind of being a standard comment regarding the grading permit fee. We, a couple of other things to address, though. Florence Road is a minor arterial on the major thoroughfare plan, and typically that would require a sidewalk to be built as a part of the development of the project. The town did receive a grant, that sidewalk being a five-foot sidewalk. The town did receive a grant to construct an eight-foot sidewalk from Rebel Road to West Ford Park, and we've entered into a contract with TDOT for that project. And so rather than have the developer build a five-foot sidewalk, it didn't make sense to us to do that, so we're to look at a bigger sidewalk. So kind of in lieu of that, staff has recommended, and they have agreed to dedicate any necessary right-of-way for that sidewalk project. This development, this area has quite a bit of right-of-way that has been dedicated with the development of the subdivisions, but there's about five or six tracks there that are still the existing homes that were there already. And so, and again, they have agreed to that issue. The other issue, and they have addressed this as well, they, we did recommend a building other than metal on the fortress-style unit buildings in the rear RV storage unit, as well as the ends of the buildings that face Florence Road. Their plans had shown a split-face block there, and that is not allowed under design review, and so we recommended a different material be used that meets designer view, and their revised plans that we received today do show either the brick or stone or hardy siding on the end of those units and in all those places that we just mentioned, so, which are, would be consistent with designer view, so. So they have addressed that comment, so we can take that off. I think that's all that I've got.
I seem to recall we'd been very consistent with that on arterials, as far as when we have allowed this.
Right. Yeah, industrial districts don't have as strict a requirements under designer view, but we felt like this was, with all the residential that's around it and everything, it made sense that at least the exterior of the development would meet those. And there is also a buffer strip requirement as well, since they are awarding residential on three sides, and they have shown that to meet our requirements as well.
Kevin, the type D buffer that's what's shown here, that's probably the most intensive of all.
It is the most intense buffer, because this is considered an industrial use against a residential, so it is, in addition to the landscaping requirements, there's actually a berm is required of that as well.
So all the exterior-facing walls, even to the back properties?
Yes.
Are going to be masonry brick or?
Right. And then having the landscape buffer in addition to that, yes.
And as you said, we actually have the other facility, or the original facility, that's been a longtime neighbor in this area.
Right. It's on the east side of the road, this is the west side, yes, directly across the street.
Okay.
We're good on ingress, egress, parking, all that?
Right. Yeah. Again, they're going to be basically utilizing the, if you need to go to the office, it's going to be across the street, so this size is really just going to be, you're going to pull in and in and out of your unit.
I actually sat down and talked to Mr. Sanders a couple of months at least ago. He had this idea, and seeing what he's done here with his agreement to make those changes that meets our design review and the buffering, and I think he's done well, we've asked of him, so. The property's got a lot of existing greenery already on it, especially the edges, if I remember right. It's kind of, it's almost boxed in.
Yeah, and certainly if there's some existing landscape in there, when they get to the development, this is approved, and they get to the site plan, they could certainly reutilize some of that existing greenery if it's already there. If you have some existing pine trees or something like that they want to keep, certainly that's fine, and just kind of fill in the gaps with it or whatever.
Any other questions of Kevin? Do I have a motion?
A motion to approve with staff comments?
I'll be glad to second.
Second with Regina. I have a motion to approve with staff comments and I have a second. Further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item three on the agenda, Michael Lee, 203 Stewart Drive, rezoning C2 to R2. Kevin?
Yeah, this is a piece of property, 203 Stewart Drive. It's actually a part of a subdivision that was rezoned commercial approaching 30 years ago now. For the most part, has remained a residential neighborhood. And we've had a couple of folks kind of in the last few years have requested and have been, have rezoned their property back to the residential zoning, and this is actually a vacant tract that they would like to build a house on, and so they have requested it to be rezoned back to the residential zoning, which is R2 is what they've requested. All surrounding zoning is C2. There isn't, again, if you look on the map on the screen there, there's a couple of lots that have been rezoned back to residential. And so the land use plan, because of the existing zoning there, did keep an office-retail multifamily mix in this area, and there is commercial along Lowry Street that's actually a part of this subdivision as well, but the internal lots are all used for residential use, so. I guess that's all I have. We would, this is, it's not consistent with the zoning, but it's consistent with the use, and so I think we would recommend it to you.
You know, and I can recall at least two and maybe three ones that, three of these that we have moved zoning from C2 back to R2.
Right.
And I think the original thought process was with the shopping center there, that this would probably develop out, and it's been my observation over the years in doing this and then working with economic development, once you get off that main road, you really don't see a lot of development that way, or not to the extent where you would see a lot of the single tracks develop into?
Right.
An office or a retail, you know, I think several have tried in there and just has never really taken off.
Yeah, I think there was an attorney's office in there at one time, there was a daycare center on one of them at one time, which now has actually been the one, has now been, come back, one of the ones has come back to residential, because they wanted to go back to residential use, and they couldn't, because it had been, it certainly lost its grandfather status as a residence, because it was used for a daycare for many years. So it is difficult to have a commercial use really in that area. It might be something we want to look at. I don't know if anybody else in that area wants to change or not, but we could possibly look at changing it back to residential in mass if somebody wanted to.
Is staff okay for this rezoning to occur?
Sure, absolutely.
Other questions for Kevin?
Was there ever a house on it? Because it looks like it's just an empty lot, maybe part of the house is kind of behind that.
I don't know that there's ever been a house on this lot, no.
Didn't look like it.
No.
Looked like a couple of trees been taken down on it, but other than that?
As far as I know, there's never been a house on this lot.
Okay. May have been one where they, someone had the home adjacent?
I think it was a double lot, one off Eastland.
Yeah.
The back of it, Eastland, where it comes in there, but it would, it's just an empty parcel, definitely would have a home back in there. Tim, I think you're right. We'll probably eventually see some of this flip back over to a softer zone, whether that be back to residential, maybe PO or something, you know, but having C2 tucked back in the neighborhood right there is, it's a tall, tall challenge, really, so.
It is.
I'll give my motion to approve the rezon. Chairman?
I have a motion to approve the rezon from Mark. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mike. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. See, our next item, rezoning I3 to I1. Mike, I'm going to say Breece, 555 Wade Harrod. Kevin?
Yeah, this is a piece of property on Wade Harrod Road, it's about just under an acre of property. Surrounding zoning is a mix of I1 and I3, and the land use plan would support industrial, heavy industrial development in this area. This is a piece of, in an area that we've seen a couple of other rezoning requests recently that are, this is all zoned heavy industrial I3. When Nissan was built, close to 40 years ago, has never developed, and so there's still some existing homes back there, but there's nothing, no industrial development back there. We have a couple of tracks that are wanting to develop, and so this is kind of a consistent theme here, with kind of almost a down zone. There, the issue on this one is primarily for setbacks. The proposed use is allowed in both zones. This is really just a setback issue. I3 has the most restrictive setbacks we have in town, with a 100-foot front setback and 50-feet sided rear. I3, or I1, rather, is a 30-foot front and 20-feet on the side and rear, and so the proposed development is, one of our comments, or a couple of our comments regarding fire flow, and there is not adequate fire flow here. This is actually served by Consolidated Utility District. They don't have adequate fire flow at this time. This proposed use is actually probably not going to be an issue, because this is, they're not proposing a building. This is for automobile towing lot, and so they're basically just wanting to put the fence around a lot and store vehicles here. The fence has to meet the front setback, and so if you have a 100-foot front setback, at the narrowest point, the slot's only about 125-feet deep, so that would make it pretty difficult. So, but with a 30-foot setback, it makes it workable for them. So that's the reasoning behind the request. So the fire flow issue is an issue regardless of the zoning, so if this falls through and someone else wants to buy this and wants to build a building, we'll have to address the fire flow certainly, but this use, that's really not an issue.
So the use still requires that 1,000 gallon per minute?
The issue, I mean, if there's no building?
Right.
Then no, the fire flow doesn't kick in.
Right.
It's just, it's just a parking lot with a fence around it.
Kevin, knowing the road and the surrounding properties, are you okay with this rezoning?
Yes, yes. I think, and I don't, the large parcel across the street is certainly being considered pretty seriously for development. I think we'll see a plan there on that fairly soon.
Part of that's already cleared off.
Yeah, so they've already done some clearing, yes. And, yes. So I think that's certainly going to be something we see soon, but the site plan.
This parcel that we're looking at, in order for them to build a building on it, power has to be moved, because it runs almost down the middle of it.
Yeah.
Main power line feeding that, back of that property for the homes and everything back there, so.
Right.
So the down zone kind of makes good sense to have something like that here, right?
Yeah.
At a lot in town somewhere, so.
Yeah, this is a perfect location for this use.
Yeah.
Okay. Other questions for Kevin? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion to approve and a second with staff comments. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Kevin, this should take us to site plans?
That's right.
All right, it looks like our first site plan is hangar 692, 692 Fitzhugh Boulevard, owner, developer, Smyrna Rutherford County Airport Authority.
This is a site plan for a new hangar at the airport. Plan B located at 692 Fitzhugh Boulevard. This proposed hangar would be 33,690 square feet with an eve height of 42 feet, roughly 220 feet long and 150 feet wide. Location for the proposed hangar is in the northeastern portion of the airport property, which is also surrounded on three sides by other hangars. Currently, the site is being used for vehicle parking. In addition to the hangar, there is a proposed glass-fused steel-ground storage tank with maximum height of 45 feet. This tank would serve as water storage and proposed to be located west of Fitzhugh Boulevard. Vehicle or use area for this development would consist of 9,100 square feet, which would require parking, or landscaping of 728 square feet, 8%. Total parking for this site required 42 spaces. They're proposing for 34. Handicap parking, two is required, proposing for two spaces as well. Landscape, as mentioned, landscape must be consistent with industrial requirements and designer view, which is 8% of the vehicle or use area, which equates out to 728 square feet. Currently, none is proposed for this development. Architecture elevation show metal building, which is consistent with the other hangars on the site. We have a couple of standard comments for this. We have a couple of standard comments for this. Then one staff comment regarding the landscaping concern. As mentioned earlier, designer view does require 8% landscaping of the vehicular use area. Staff would be okay with the, without allowing trees at the site, seeing as it is on airport property and just attracting other wildlife nearby the airport. The engineer did reply back to that comment saying the owner requesting approval without landscape requirement. The proposed building is in excess of one mile past the National Guard security gate and not visible from any public accessible right of ways. None of the surrounding hangars have landscaping. Owner, owner understands the intent of landscaping, but within close proximity to Percy Priest increases the potential wildlife habitat in an area which is also in close proximity to the approach to runway 19. So it's up to y'all if y'all want to go away with that requirement as part of designer view. But that is their response to that comment. That's all we got.
Okay, I did want to follow up on that a little bit. Who's here representing the airport? John, could, could you come up and just speak to that, please, concerning landscaping?
John Black, I'm the airport director at Smyrna Airport. So yes, the hangar is about one mile past the National Guard gate, which is, of course, it's a controlled access, you have to get, have a badge to get through. This site is a site of a former, there used to be a hangar there years ago. If you're from here, you may remember, it burned down back in the 1980s. So we're kind of, kind of using that site to rebuild this. And there are three other hangars identical to the, to the one that burned down, which none of them have landscaping. We are, we do actually have a wildlife management plan for the entire airport that was about a product of about a year-long study of all the wildlife, especially birds and habitat. So that's why we're, you know, the FAA really kind of directs you away from, you know, landscaping and attracting wildlife if you can, if you can. Now, we have built hangars that do front public roads and we have added landscaping in those areas to, you know, to a lesser degree if possible, but that's kind of the reasoning behind it.
I guess my reason for questioning was that would, would, my thought was any type of landscaping could potentially enhance wildlife coming to a site versus just concrete.
Yeah, the most ideal situation is to have an airport with no landscaping.
Yeah.
At all. So, but we don't have that.
It's not at any of the other hangars either, right?
Right, right, there's no.
And it is controlled access, it's not a public, it's not a public.
Yeah, I was going to say, who would, who would the end user be for this once it's constructed?
Well, it's going to be a maintenance, repair and overhaul hangar, which means that we can do a lot of aircraft maintenance, they're very high-paying jobs. And the way we've designed this hangar is it can hold up to 1-737-800, which are a kind that you might get on Southwest Airlines and fly. So it's, it's a very marketable hangar and there are, there's a very big hangar shortage in this area.
So I couldn't just pull up and get my 747 serviced?
We'd get part of it in there.
You know, Tim, I was a little concerned when you said that hangar burned down. You said 1980, we lived over there in 1970, so.
I was in Texas.
I don't think we were responsible for that, so.
But you know, I understand the logic about no landscaping.
Okay. Any other questions for John, while he's up here?
Just a comment to John. John, thank you, Paul, Mike, everybody out at the Airport Authority and the whole body of people out there because community is big and you guys are very, very involved in doing a lot of stuff with Smyrna and our community. And the economic impact that that airport, that airport brings out here to Smyrna is really beyond what you can really understand unless you do this every day. So we appreciate the partnership we have with the airport out there, all of it.
Likewise, and we'll be back, we have another hangar coming up too.
Good.
We'll make you landscape that one, how's that?
Any other questions from the commission for Kevin or anyone else associated with the project? If none, do I have a motion?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve with staff comments.
Excluding.
Excluding landscape.
Excluding landscape.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve, approve with staff comments with the exception of not requiring landscaping. And a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Our next item under site plans is legacy luxury townhomes. Legacy court, owner, developer, legacy joint ventures. Kevin?
This is a site plan for.
Mitch, I'm sorry.
Legacy luxury townhomes, has been brought to y'all before. So it says a townhome development that is planned to include 52 townhome units on approximately 8.5 acres. The site is own PRD and the site plan is consistent with the approved PRD. Most of the site is located within the 100-year floodplain with the northeastern quarter located in the floodway. Property is surrounded by a mix of zoning districts, which includes C2, R3 and R6. Access to the site would be provided off Legacy Court, which is a private roadway. Total vehicular use area for this development, 28,050 square feet, which would require landscaping of 2,805 square feet. Applicant is proposing for 3,000 square feet, so they are meeting that requirement. Total parking required is two per unit, so that comes out to 104 spaces. Applicant is proposing for two garage spaces with two driveway spaces, coming out to 208, and then 17 additional guest parking spaces throughout the site, which comes out to 225 total parking spaces for this development. Because it is townhome development, no handicap parking is required, but they are proposing for one to be located nearby all the amenities. Landscape plan shows shrubs lining Legacy Court and in the rear of the units behind the existing liquor store. A variety of trees and shrubs are proposed to be planted in front of each unit as well. A six-foot privacy fence will also be installed behind the 20 units, which do back up to the single-family detached homes on Turlow Court. Architecture elevations show building material consistent with the approved PRD of brick and a cementous siding. The optional stone component was part of the PRD approval as well, but has not been shown on the elevations that were submitted. They are proposing for just stone, or sorry, brick and cementous siding in those elevations that were provided to us. We have a couple of standard comments. Just point out number six about the plat being required to be recording the public easements for the cross-axis season for the adjoining commercial lots and the Greenway easement. And seven, providing a L O M R F to amend the floodplain, flood map for this parcel. They, applicant has made notes for both of those comments. Staff comment seven, to label all road names and provide 911 approval. Applicant has been through this a couple of times. They've thrown out a couple of road names to us, but we're still looking for a, a good road name, so this comment will have to stay. Comment two, to show full creek crossing plan for sanitary sewer. The engineer needs to provide calculations on the casing crossing for deflection. I spoke with utilities today and they are in contact with the engineer to tie into an existing sewer line nearby the existing townhome unit. So on, which is located on an adjacent parcel. So at this time, this comment will have to stay because nothing is set in stone for this separate sewer connection. Comment three regarding the truck turnaround has been addressed. Comment four, providing details on the retaining wall. They are showing a retaining wall, which is proposed to go along the existing legacy drive. And they have not provided any further details on that, but made a comment noting that plans will be provided prior to building permits being issued. So that comment will have to stay. And comments five through seven have all been addressed by the applicant as well, so they can all, they can all be on. And with that, staff would recommend approval with the above listed comments that do remain.
All right, thanks Mitch. This appears to be very consistent with what's been seen before. And I think, you know, prior comments from me included that I appreciated that even though we, with the two parking pads and the garages, that we still have the additional guest parking here. Any other questions for Mitch?
I had just one and I'm probably just drawing a blank. For some reason, I go back to the original PUD approval. Was there a fence involved with the neighboring properties?
There is. There, there is an existing one behind that, those 20 units.
Can you point to that? I didn't see it on my plat.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's showing back here, there actually, there's some existing fencing back there that the neighbors have, but they are proposing a fence kind of in this area, all on the back of all those units.
Okay, okay, I see it now. I was looking at the landscape.
And that was, it was brought up when this came through for rezoning originally.
Yeah, I remembered it and that's why I was asking, okay, I'm good.
Other questions? Do I have a motion?
A move to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments, second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, under site plans, Mayfield Townhomes, 260 Mayfield Drive. Owner, developer, Somerset LLC. And Mitch, I'm going to make a wild guess here, it's you again.
You're right.
All right, good, I'm going to leave Kevin out at this time.
So this is a planned townhome development located on Mayfield Drive. It is on the eastern parcel adjacent to the post office. This townhome development is for 29 units on 3.96 acres, which would equate to a density of about 7.32 units per acre. Two private streets will serve these units and provide access to Mayfield Drive. The surrounding zoning consists of R4, R6 and C2. Vehicular use area for this site, 35,255 square feet, which would require landscaping of 3,525 square feet. Applicant is proposing for 4,284 square feet, so they are meeting that requirement. Total parking, once again, is two per unit, so that requirement is 58 spaces. They are showing 87 between the garage and driveway with 13 additional guest parking spaces, coming out to 100 total parking spaces for this development. Once again, handicap parking is not required due to it being a townhome development. But one of, one of those, just like the last development, there is one handicap parking space planned nearby the mail kiosk area. Landscape plan shows trees, street trees lining Mayfield Drive and the two private drives servicing this development. Shrubs are shown to be planted at the base of each townhouse unit and along the sides of the end units. Landscape buffer is proposed to be planted behind each row of townhomes along the eastern parcel boundary. Elevations show front and rear elevations with a mix of materials on the first floor of stone and brick veneer, alternating between each of the units. And a mix of fiber cement board siding and board and batten siding on the upper level, alternating between the units. Side elevations show brick on the first floor and fiber cement on the upper level. We have a couple of standard comments that will need to remain, as well as a couple of staff comments. This, a couple of the staff comments do revolve around the elevations and the engineer did note that they wouldn't have enough time to turn those around and get back to us. So they have addressed those comments, so let's go through them real quick. Comment one regarding the, staff would recommend the first floor of the units be entirely clad in brick, which would remain consistent with surrounding development. The developer did agree to the all brick and stone on the front and sides of the first floor. Rear has fencing, so they would like to keep a hardy board mix on the back. Number two, elevations do not match site plan. There was some questions revolving the five-unit townhome development. The end units showed a two-car garage on what would be the units 24 and 29. Site plan shows one-car garage for those units. Additionally, units 20 and 25 show garages on, and the front door flip-flop from each other as far as was depicted on the elevation plan. As a response to this comment, the applicant did say the five-unit building will be all single-car garage and match the footprint shown on the site plan. And comment three, similar to the last one, the development will require a recorded file plat dedicating all the public easements within this development. So with that, staff would recommend approval with the above listed comments.
Questions for staff?
So the recommendation is to keep the main floor brick on three sides and stone? I agree with that. You've got Oakley Village next door there, that's, that kind of keeps it consistent with those units there, I think.
You also have the housing authority units across the street, which are all brick. They're all one-story units, but they're all, they're all brick.
Parking is consistent as far as the two-car parking pad for all units. What I'm saying, I just want to make sure and verify that.
Yes.
Kevin, this is for you. We've seen this a long time ago, or a while back, did we not?
There's been, there were some apartments approved, or actually, site plan was approved.
For apartments?
For apartments, probably, gosh, 10 years ago maybe, it's been a long time.
Longer than that a bit.
Yeah, and so this is obviously, these are townhome units. It's about almost a little over half of what the units that were approved originally with the apartments. It was pretty well at max density with the apartment development that was proposed. It is zoned R6, they were completely within the realm of what they could do. And this is coming back with, with certainly still multifamily, but fewer units than they are for sale.
Lower density zone, it's already zoned appropriately.
What it's zoned for and also they're for sale units as well, versus the rental.
Well, keep in mind what Kevin just said, it was, it was zoned R6.
And has been zoned R6 for 15 or 20 years.
Without asking, so I appreciate the downsizing here. Or it can be apartments without asking, so.
Okay, any other questions from the commission? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with staff comments.
I have a motion to approve with staff comments. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve with staff comments. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Kevin, that takes us through site plans?
Yes.
Okay. So it looks like the next item on the agenda is a zoning ordinance amendment, Mobile Food Service Benders.
Yeah, this is a, an amendment, text amendment to the zoning ordinance. It is something that council asked staff to look at two, three months ago. And so we put some work together and we have discussed this at a couple of different council workshops. And so, but since it is a zoning amendment, it does have to originate through this body as well, so. And basically, this is kind of with some changes or proposing some changes regarding mobile food service vehicles, food trucks would be the more popular way to say that, I guess. And so basically, staff reviewed and researched a lot of surrounding communities and, and looked at how they address this type of use. And currently, the town requires this use to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, except in the case of if you're in a town event or if you're in a very, like a private event that a, a business might have someone come to just serve for their company or something like that. You have to, it is, goes through the Board of Zoning Appeals. There's a limitation on the days that you can be and what zones you can be and those kind of things. And so what we found is most, every other community in our area treats this like as, as an administrative permit instead of a Board of Zoning Appeals review. And so it's a, it's like getting a business license. You get to come through the city to staff and get a permit if you can meet certain criteria. And so what this ordinance would do would be to change what we do currently and bake it an administrative permit. Does set up all the criteria, what they have to meet, what zones they can be in. There is limitation on the number of days they can be there. There are, they have to be on private property, they cannot be in, in a public right of way or anything like that. And they can go in residential areas if the HOA invites them or things of that nature, which currently you're not allowed in residential areas under our ordinance, so. And so basically, what again, set up, they have to meet those requirements. It would be reviewed by the planning department and then they would pay. It would also be a, it's a $200, or we're recommending a $200 annual fee they would have to obtain before they could operate within the town. So there's a lot in there, it's a very long. We did model this somewhat after Brentwood's ordinance. They had the kind of what we thought was the best approach to this. And so it, it, there's a lot in there, but that is in a nutshell what we're talking about.
For the commission's, I guess, knowledge, this is kind of born from COVID when we saw either restaurants not being allowed to open or individuals not wanting to go to, you know, public restaurants and it became something that we saw that the neighborhoods were asking for. So it was a bit of a balance for us to determine how do we do this? How do we administrate it properly? How do we collect fees for, for use of our, you know, of our, our town? Whereas, you know, sales tax, there's, may or may not be collected or, or it's collected, but may or may not all make it back to us. So we're trying to be respectful for our brick and mortars and also for the general public as far as what they're asking for too. So I know Eric and I guess Jeff, you guys put a lot of work into this?
Actually, Jeff.
Okay, Jeff, can remember if you were here when this was going on or not, but okay. Mr. Peach, put quite a bit, a lot of work into this and we looked not only at what we thought, we looked at other neighbors, neighboring communities as far as a template to work from. Mark, do you have anything?
Well, for the other three here, the council's kind of batted this around a little bit already and one of the things we compelled of them was to see what communities around us were doing to try to find some consistency as much as anything and to be fair with everybody involved. One of the things I think streamlining this is just being able to come in and get a permit to do it now instead of having to go through Board of Zoning Approval and all that. So it's business friendly to those people and like Tim said, we do want to keep our brick and mortar stores and, you know, we want to keep them in mind too. So just trying to be fair across the board, so that's all.
Do any of you guys have any questions after looking at this or hearing any of the?
Kevin, you said there would be a fee involved in them having a license to function. Is that gonna be, if they come in and, is it gonna be a, is it gonna run a year?
Yeah, it will be an annual fee, again, every year in January.
They purchase it?
Yeah, they would have to come in and purchase to legally operate.
So if they purchase on July 1 this year, they would, it would expire July 1 of next year?
No, actually it'll be, it would expire every year. We're not gonna track every one of these that way.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be January 1 of each year. So if they.
Not the town's calendar year, but the, a true calendar year?
A true calendar year, yeah.
January 1, okay.
Yeah, each year in January, they'll have to get a fee. And one, an additional fee, which I put in the memorandum, but I didn't say, we have occasionally have had folks want to do, they call them a food truck rally where there'll be multiple trucks in one location for like a one or two day event. That's a separate fee. If you have more than two trucks, it's considered a rally and it's a separate fee. In addition to that $200 per truck fee, there will be a separate fee for the rally of $300.
But is that 300 total?
300 total.
Not 300 per truck?
Right. 300 total for the, for that one, for that event.
For that event.
So they'd have the $200 annual fee and then if they had a rally, they'd pay a one-time $300.
For that. They wanted to have a rally with 10 or 12 trucks, they would pay 300 bucks in addition to the 200 bucks.
Yeah. It sounds like a good streamlined process and a good compromise to me.
They've been doing it anyway, it's just been cumbersome on them to come in and get the permit and all that, so.
Good questions and conversation, guys.
They probably missed out on some work because people are calling and wanting an event done and you've gotta go before these end. It just will not happen that quick, so this will definitely, I think it'll help, help, help the food service on that side of it out tremendously.
So we do need a motion to approve this amendment to the zoning ordinance. Unless there's any further discussion, so with that, do I have a motion?
I've got one question.
Okay.
So how would this be governed? So would this be something that's posted or someone could just ask for? Do you have a permit?
Yeah, it will have to be if someone, if we see someone and they're operating, we, they'll have a, we will, we still have to come up with all the format, form, the permit applications and all those kind of things. I anticipate that we'll have some, we'll come up with some sort of a sticker or something they can put in their window, you know, that they can have it. And so if, if someone, a police officer or a code enforcement personnel sees someone operating, they can very easily say yes, they have their permit or no, they don't.
Right. Okay, so that would be a part of this?
Yes, absolutely. This, this sets up the rules, we'll, we still have to come up with the, how we're gonna administer it with all the application forms and all that kind of stuff, but yeah.
Okay.
And I anticipate we will probably just make this effective January 1 because we have some folks that have come through the BZA this year. I don't want to make them have to pay another, they've already paid their $250 fee to come to the BZA. You know, I don't think we've got anybody that's been approved for 2021, so we, we could probably just make this effective January 1 really and then, and then that gives us a little bit of time because if this goes through council, the normal procedure, it'll be approved in October for suck reading, so just making it effective on that January 1 date kind of makes some sense and so it'll be for folks next year going, going to their
So Kevin, this is an annual fee based on the calendar year. So if somebody wanted to get it, you know, purchase this in the fall, they'd still have to do it again in January, right? Okay, that's what I understood.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's how most of the communities we found do it.
They wouldn't prorate it or anything because they miss so many months, yeah.
No, we, we, a few months ago when we first started talking about that, we talked about prorating it for 2020.
Right.
But now we're gonna be so close to the end of the year, we'll probably just make it start with January 1.
Anybody in that business would be wise to come in in January and just get their permit.
Yeah.
They've got the whole year to operate.
They got the whole year to operate.
Well, and I think certainly the ones that, that are already operating here now will know this and they'll be ready to go in January to go through this process.
Right. And we'll, you know, the, I think it's the president, there's a Middle Tennessee Association or whatever for these type of businesses actually located here, so certainly we can communicate with him and they can get the word out too as well to that, within the vendor, within the association, anyone who's a member of that association at least, we could get the word out that way. Certainly, well, we can communicate it ourselves through social media and the website and those kind of things too, certainly we will do that, but I think reaching folks through their association will be another way to do it.
Good discussion. Any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the amendment to the zoning ordinance for mobile food service vehicles. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. September bond review report.
Yeah, we've got several again this month. Luckily, hopefully several of these will be able, this will be the end for their process because we'll be able to release them hopefully. First one is Woodcraft Section 5. This is one, it's only about 55.6% built out, which is only nine lots, who are five out of nine. They still got several items to finish, including the final topping. We do recommend extension of this one for six months. Preserver Stewart Creek Section 1 is 100% built out and they are done with one small item and my understanding, I heard from them today that they got that finished this week, so we'll confirm that and if that's the case, we would recommend it be released. Otherwise, we would extend it six months, but hopefully, but they, they are done. Bankside Section 3, this is a maintenance bond. They still have a few things to clean up. We still do need either ASBels, they are working on those. They have requested, they do want to get that finished and requested, we release it and we were happy to do that if they get those items completed, otherwise we would want to extend that one six months. Burton Farm Section 5, Phase 3 and 4, they're the next two. They are both into the maintenance period on both of those and they will, they have said they want to finish those up and if they are, again, if they're able to get those done by the 19th of September, we're happy to release it, otherwise we would need to extend those. Preserver Stewart Creek Section 2, same as Section 1, completely built out, just the last item, so if that's done, we could release or otherwise extend six months. Addition to Village of Valley Green, Section 2, Phase 2, a couple of small items there. They have said they're gonna finish those up. We will see where that is, if they're able to. We could release if completed, otherwise we do need to extend it. Sterling Stonecrest, these are the apartments as well as the, all the utilities and all that went with that and so there's, they are again nearing the end of the, just some minor items there. We have received the ASBels, that's one thing we have, since this comments went out, so it's really just the other two items. And again, we would recommend it to be released. If completed, otherwise extend. And then Tantal Farm Section 2, this was just a small maintenance bond on a sewer line. Again, they have indicated to me they finished today, so we've sent it out to utilities and if that's done, we could release, otherwise we would need to extend, but most likely release that one. So hopefully we'll be able to release a lot of these this month. That's all I've got.
Any questions or comments concerning the bond report? Do I have a motion? Motion to approve with staff recommendations. I have a motion to approve with staff recommendations. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion to approve and a second with staff comments. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bond reviews approved. Staff comments?
I don't have anything else.
Mitch, you're good. Eric? Charles?
Good.
Good to see you out there.
Good sir.
I had to look a couple of times just to make sure with that mask on.
I know, my wife almost took somebody else home from a grocery store the other day. It's hard to tell.
It's a good excuse. Any comments from the commission?
We stand adjourned.